The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Call this Town Council meeting to order and we will, if we can rise with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Counselor Nefanelli?
Here.
Counselor Evans?
Here.
Mayor Kazinsky?
Here.
Counselor Letty?
Here.
Counselor Agassa?
Here.
Counselor Russell?
Here.
Mayor, you have a form.
All right, thank you. Now we have our audience of citizens. If now is the time, if anyone wants to speak on any topic or address us with anything, there now would be the time. Yes, ma'am. Mary?
Yes, Mary Catherine.
Welcome.
Hi. I'm Mary Catherine LaRose, 26 Woodruff Lane in Kensington. The reason I'm here tonight is regarding the ordinance committee that's been formed to look at bicentennial park and the leash laws. Mayor Kazinsky, I sent you an email, but I don't know if you got it or if you read it.
I did, yes, actually. You were on the list to call. You were, I was going to give you a call because I know you wanted to discuss a little bit.
Oh, okay. Well, that's okay. No, it's okay. But no, I just didn't know because sometimes technology isn't what it should be. Anyway, I just wanted to back up a little bit and talk about the fact that the town addressed this issue around 25 to 30 years ago. And at that time, it was brought up that residents in that area wanted the leash law enforced. And we had, we had people come out, dog owners and other people against, foreign against, at town meetings and letters were written. And at the end of it all, there was an accommodation made that, as the result was that the accommodation was that as long as the dog owners obeyed certain rules posted on a sign, which is still hanging in the park, and as long as the dog was under the owner's control at all times, park users could walk their dogs off-leash. Just, I made a few copies of that. I actually made it for the people that are on the ordinance committee, so I made like three. And I apologize for the quality of it, but I took a picture of it with my camera on my phone. And then, I believe you're on the committee?
Yes, thank you.
And I believe Mr. Letty's on the committee?
That's great.
And I think Mayor's on the committee, right?
Yes, and...
If there's more, I apologize. I'm sorry.
Can you give one to...
Both of them are unnamed.
Yeah, give one. We'll share this. Oh, yeah, go. I got it. We got it.
Peter and I can share.
We're good.
This sign is posted, not at the entrance to the park, which somehow another sign was added later saying the dogs had to be leashed. But this is, this sign is posted on a tree at the far end of the big open field that people generally will walk. They can also go around the trails, but at least the big field is a lot of places where the dogs, people come and they romp and play and the people talk and the dogs play. And anyway, so this, these were the rules that were agreed upon. Bicentennial Park is unique, open space usable by all, walkers, hikers, joggers, mountain bikers, nature observers, dog walkers, cross-country skiers. Obey posted speed limits and parking regulations when entering or exiting the park area. Leash dogs to and from the park. Keep watch over and pick up after your dog. Keep park noise from disturbing the neighbors. Do not congregate in the cul-de-sac and move beyond the first bench in the park. Exercise care when approached by other park users. And there's a little part that says, "Don't mess it up," or something about it's unique. That's at the bottom, but I got cut off. I apologize. But that sign is still there, and that was the result of a lot of discussion and back and forth that happened 25 or 30 years ago. I know this because I've had three generations of dogs that I've walked in that park. So I'm estimating the dates by what dog I owned at the time. So I'm saying it's about that length of time. The real problem at the park isn't really the dogs, it's the parking issue. And I would estimate that nine out of 10 park users bring their dogs to enjoy socialization with other humans and their dogs. The system works in the park because the dog owners self-police themselves. If a dog doesn't get along with others or doesn't come when called, that owner doesn't come back. Or if they do, they keep their dog on a leash the next time. And I can attest to this because I had a dog that I rescued from a dog pound, and the first time I brought her to the park, she didn't get along with another female dog. And from then on, if I went there with her, she was on a leash and I never let her loose again. So we do self-police our animals. The problem is the inadequate parking available for such a popular park. The town needs to provide safe and adequate parking for bicentennial park. I'm, I read, I'm here tonight because of the article that was in the Berlin Citizen on February 6, 2017. I found the article to be a bit humorous because it mentions reports of unleashed dogs and that the mayor heard that the park is becoming an attraction for people. And all I can say is, "Where have you been?" Because this has been going on for 25 to 30 years, three generations of my dogs. And lots of people walk their dogs there. Some people do walk without dogs. And when I, when I visited the park recently, I talked to some people that go daily to the park. I'm not that kind of a user. I'm just an occasional user. And they said that, you know, to their knowledge, no one's been bitten, no one's been scratched, no one's been knocked down. It's a wonderful place and they just love going there. They know each other, the people and the dogs by name, and sometimes they actually arrange play dates with each other. They know they're going to be there at 10:30 in the morning on Sunday, and they have a wonderful time. It's a fabulous place. The only thing lacking is a safe, adequate parking area. I'm really interested in this issue and, as I mentioned, when I called the town manager's office, they said that the committee wasn't looking for residents to be on their committee. This was kind of a closed committee. But I just wanted to say that I'm really willing to work with the council. If you need me to help resolve the issue, I'll do anything that's needed. One thing I would suggest, I don't think you have data on just who uses the park. Maybe it would be good to collect data on a few days, you know, different times, you know, how many people are walking without dogs? How many people are going there with just children? How many people are going with dogs? And kind of get some real facts behind anything that you decide to do on the, on the park. Obviously, these kinds of places are very few. A place where you can safely take your dog and the dog can just run in the field, chase a ball, play with another dog, romp, even wrestle with them. It's just a very rare and fabulous place, and I don't want to see us lose that in town. And my final comment is that I don't want to call it a dog park. I want to call it a dog-friendly park because I think it really is for people and for dogs. And so that's why I think it would be nice to call it a dog-friendly park. So thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, all the audience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we had a couple of meetings. Mary, Ellen, I don't know if you were at the ordinance committee meetings. We've had a couple already, but...
I don't know of them. Is there a way to find out when they are?
Posted on the town website. We haven't set another one yet. I'm thinking probably won't be another one now.
I do not know how to navigate the site well.
Yeah. And we probably don't have one set up till after probably March because it's kind of our budget season and we have a lot of meetings already in March, so probably later. So how we left it, just so you know, for anyone else, for the dog issued in bicentennial park, we just, we're still discussing it. You know, we've had a lot of input from dog owners like yourself. I've had a few emails. I mean, I've walked the park myself many times. I live right near there.
Do you have a dog?
I have a dog as well, yes. I don't, I don't bring him to the park, but, so...
It would be interesting if you went back to see, I mean, I'm, again, estimating the date at which all of this was raised.
Mary Catherine, I didn't have you on the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I should have left you...
I'm sorry. Just if, if anyone could re, and that could be something I could try to do, is to research when it was back that we raised this issue with the town. I'm not even sure if we had a council then or if it was, what was it called before the council? Were you still...
Debate or selectmen.
It's like, yeah, it may have been back then. But anyway, you, you have my contact information, but I'll need to find out how to navigate the site to see when the, that meeting, those meetings are. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
So, and so what, actually, what you said though is good because I know last time we left that I think we wanted some information. We were going to look at facts and different things about the park, so maybe the next meeting, if you come or before then, I could give you a call and we can talk about, you know, getting some information.
Okay.
Because we were, it's still in the discussion stage and we're just trying to figure out. I mean, we have an ordinance now that basically says your dog is under, under the control of the owner. It doesn't say on a leash, so we talked about perhaps that definition maybe needs to be fixed a little bit. I don't think we're talking about redoing a whole ordinance. At least that was our discussion the last time, but we really did want some more, you know, background information and just to figure out what, what if anything...
And I really think focusing on the real, the real problem.
The parking, yeah.
The real problem is the parking.
Well, we had...
It's such a popular place on weekends especially.
Yeah, oh, I know.
And I, I think that cul-de-sac thing with only like seven or eight cars that try to squeeze themselves in, it's not safe. I can't imagine an emergency vehicle trying to make that circle if all those cars are really there. So I do understand that, but you know, if it's going to be open space and usable to everybody, maybe that could be addressed.
Yeah, we had, years ago in planning and zoning, we did, there was a plan that came forward for a parking lot there. And I don't rem, I know it went away. I don't, I, I thought we approved it, but I think it might have had something to do with the restrictions on the park, you know, whatever the deed restrictions were about putting a parking lot there. I believe that's what happened to it. I'm not 100% sure. Maybe Jack, Town Manager...
Your legal experts have to look at that.
Yeah, we'll look at that, but we did, we did talk about that. That was a topic, and I want to say that's probably 10 years ago now or a little bit less, but we did, I think we approved a parking lot, but it never went to effect. You sure can't.
Within the last couple of years also, we've discussed the parking lot issue because I know for residents in that area, in the cul-de-sac, just having people parking there all weekend long, when the weather's nice, can present a bit of a, an issue for them too. And we did look at additional parking on different ends of the park, so having some on the Chamberlain Highway, which is now available. But then you have to walk kind of into and through the park to get to that big open field. We looked at some others, and I don't know if Helen's here, I think it's her, but...
I've actually gone to the, the way, place where the community gardens are.
Yes, exactly.
But again, there's nothing so...
It's hard to get there.
Yeah, and it's not as, I know my dog's picked up fleas there because it's not as, as mowed and open, you know?
And so I think the parking issue has been explored and probably needs some further exploration, but certainly you're not the first to, to raise the issue of the parking as, as...
I know.
And because it's so well-known in the, in the community, not just Berlin, a lot of people know that that's the entrance to it.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. In fact, since Helen is here, if, if she remembers what happened, remember the parking lot? Didn't we approve it? I don't remember what happened to it. Say Jack a phone call or a trip down the hall.
I think that you might be partially right about the restrictions and we should look into that. But another issue that arose when we talked about the parking lot was, or two issues. One, the Conservation Commission wasn't thrilled with having the meadow, this is like our last meadow in town, broken up into a parking lot, but they did go along with it. But the other issue was the people on, and I said Cole Lane last time, but it's what comes off of Cole...
Yeah.
One step. Where it ends right there, they said, "Well, now, you know, there was just a little amount of parking for them. Now you build a whole parking lot, we're going to have even more people there because sometimes they come and if it's too full, they'll go away, but now it'll be like a whole new parking lot envisioned for them." So it's, I think it's, there were a lot of reasons that didn't go through and maybe we should relook into what we want to do now.
Okay. Thanks, Helen. Yeah, I mean, it's all, it's all, we're kind of revisiting it all and, you know, we'll have definitely some more public input as we go forward with the ordinance committee. Not going to make any hasty decisions and we're going to make sure we, you know, make, make the park enjoyable for everyone, so we will do that. So thanks for that. Anybody else in the audience of citizens? Seeing none, I will close this part of the meeting and we will go on now to our, we have a, a public hearing. So I will convene this public hearing for the $500,000 breathing apparatus appropriation and bond ordinance. The ordinance, which is the subject of this public hearing, is available to the public and may be obtained at this meeting from the town clerk. First of all, I'd like to take a motion and a second to read the title of the following proposed ordinance and to waive the reading of the remainder of the ordinance incorporating its full text into the minutes of this meeting. So if I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. I'll read the ordinance in brief. An ordinance appropriating $500,000 for the acquisition of self-contained breathing apparatus and authorizing the issue of $500,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. So that's the ordinance. This is the public hearing for, we're not going to vote on it tonight. We'll, we'll have a public hearing. So now we've come to the public comments of the public hearing. So if anyone regarding this ordinance that I just read wishes to make any comments, now's the time. Seeing none, we will close the, the public hearing on the $500,000 breathing apparatus bond ordinance. So now we will consider that closed. And we will, next, at the next meeting, we will, we will vote on it. So thank you very much. Now we will go to item number one, business.
Okay. Item number one is to be, the summary is that the Silver Petrocelli Associates has made a donation of $500 to support the Berlin High School project with a commemorative plaque. The plaque has been, has been, it's been made. As part of the discussion, there are donations received from several different vendors who worked on the project. This is the most recent one, so the architects have donated $500 and need your approval to accept it.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to accept the donation of the $500 from Silver Petrocelli Associates, Inc., to the BHS commemorative plaque and appropriate the funds into the capital equipment account.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
How much does a plaque like that cost altogether?
Eva, Eva's here to discuss the questions with the plaque.
Okay. Hi, Eva.
The plaque is bronze and it costs $3,600.
$3,600. So is it all, the entire cost made up by donations?
No. $1,500 of it was made up by the donations. One was, we're awaiting one to come yet, but committed to was Gilbane. I believe last meeting you accepted from FIP a $500 donation, and this time is SPNA's. So that's $1,500. The rest came from the account that you're charging.
And I don't mean to sound ungrateful. I appreciate these people making a donation to the town. It's definitely worthy to note who was involved. But the plaque is inaccurate and will it be corrected and how do we fund that?
And what do you mean inaccurate?
Well, it says that Mr. Salina's mayor in 2017 in our town, and unfortunately, that's not accurate.
The year is 2017 in terms of the commemorative date of the ribbon cutting. The plaque is not inaccurate in terms of who is sitting on it currently. The plaque was made for who made the project go forward. So it was my understanding that the...
There's been several mayors since then and they all helped. I'd like to see all of them mention...
It's my understanding that the project took about two or three years and I think two referendums to get going. It was those folks that pushed it forward that were put onto the plaque.
I would also like to comment. I think it is just standard practice that whoever was mayor at the time the project began is who is on the plaque. And I was mayor during the time of construction. I personally am very proud to have Mr. Salina and Mrs. McNairs and, and, you know, Mr. Ulet's name. All of those people are no longer sitting as chairs.
Mr. Brosh, I'm sorry.
And Mr. Broshu, absolutely. So I am, I, I think it is an accurate reflection, so...
I have a question. There was an old plaque, right? Is that still around? Did we remove that, throw it away? I mean, there's history in the school. I mean, this plaque should have said renovate his new project, blank, and the people that you all say should be there. But where's the old plaque for the original school and the, the second edition, the new gym, all that? That should be there too. Somewhere.
I have no idea where that would be.
Can I make one more comment? I just find it amazing that we're having this conversation from people who did absolutely everything they could to make sure this project didn't go forward, to have someone's name on a plaque that didn't support it. It just is astounding to me that you guys are going to put pride above the school.
Counselor Rochette was talking. Don't interrupt.
Well, that's true, but you're making assumptions that are not true.
Why are you pushing so hard to have Mayor Kazinsky's name on the plaque?
I just asked a question where the old one was.
Mayor? I'm sorry, I was pushing to have your name on the plaque and I thought you were in favor of the project.
I absolutely was, but I don't feel my name's...
And you just said you weren't because you said that I'm pushing to have people on here that aren't in favor of it. I'm pushing for actors.
You guys want Mayor Kazinsky on the plaque. I don't need my name on a plaque to know that I put an effort in to make that school what it is today.
Well, then it should say Mayor 2011 or whenever Mr. Salina was last mayor. Maybe the 17 is inaccurate.
And I do, I just do want to clear one thing up about, I did hear some talk about me personally not being in favor of the school project, which of course I wasn't even on Town Council then. So I don't know how you'd even know what I, how I voted, but I was on planning and zoning and that came through us, the site plan, and we voted unanimously for it. So I'm on record as voting for it, just to clear up the record because there always seems to be a lot of misrepresentations about a lot of different things, and that's completely incorrect. So just to straighten that out. That's just here or there, but that's just to get it correct. Yes, go ahead.
I, I really feel like this is kind of a sad conversation that we're having here. We have a gorgeous new high school. We're bickering over a $3,600 plaque whose name is on it and who should get credit. That's ridiculous. Let's not worry about who's getting credit and let's just be thrilled that we have a gorgeous new high school and our kids are learning things that they need to be learning, 21st century skills. This is not what's important. What's important is that people are getting what they need.
Yes, sir.
May I have a question for Eva? The, the accounts that they put it into, is there any reimbursement involved in this or is this just from the school or the town side? I don't think there is, but I'm just asking if there was any part of that.
I don't believe there's any reimbursement, so... Right. So that's why it got charged to the site or capital equipment account.
Understood. Great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, motion on the floor, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Number two.
Okay, item number two is, subject is to waive the bidding requirements for Northeast Labs to perform additional testing for compliance with Connecticut Department of Health requirements. Ray Gerema's here to address any questions on this. For the drinking water, you have to have a lab do work and additional analysis were required this year by state code and by federal code, which required additional testing. Ray's here to answer any questions regarding this.
Okay. Make a motion?
Move to waive the bidding requirements for Northeast Laboratories to allow for payments up to $15,000 so that the Berlin Water Control Commission remains in compliance with water quality tests established by the Connecticut Department of Health, as this is in the best interest of the town of Berlin.
Second on that?
Second.
Discussion. Any questions for Ray?
May I just a question for Mr. Gerema?
Ray.
We may ask, turn to Mr. Delaney, but the amount that is expended to this point, and this is kind of why we're, we're in this situation, you're being proactive, looking ahead and saying, "Hey, I think I'm going to hit that $10,000 threshold," right? So we're at a certain point right now in expenditures, right?
Correct. We, we are reached the $9,500 and we still have some VOC testing that's required for our new wells, so I know we're going to exceed the, at least that, plus more.
And how do you establish the pricing for what we've already expended and what we may need to expend at the end of the year?
I estimated it, but what happened is, is that the, this year we have triannual testing, so we had some radionuclides that needed to be done, uranium, radium, and inorganics and another batch of synthetic organics, which are VOCs, but they're chlorinated compounds. So that was underestimated in terms of cost because Northeast Laboratories usually sends that out because they can't do certain tests on an ongoing basis.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Here we go for the questions. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. At this point, can we have a, a motion to move item six to number three?
I'd like to make a motion to move item six, the presentation by Civic Moxie, up to number three, and the rest of them will fall in line after that.
Second on that?
Second.
And we're just, we're trying to move them up because they need to, they have a long trip tonight to, to get back home, so we wanted to move them up a little bit in the, in the program here. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
I'm going to try to keep this very short. I'm from Civic Moxie. We're a Boston-area planning and urban design firm. We've been hired to do the transit-oriented development plan for Kensington Village, and I'm giving you an update on where we are on the project. Transit-oriented development, just to say what that is, it's, it's an approach to development usually in a transit corridor where you have multiple choices for transportation. So this revolves around the upgrades to the Kensington, to the train station, the Berlin train station by Amtrak. We're looking at a mix of uses, thinking about pedestrian-oriented Kensington Village, how to reduce kind of parking by doing parking sharing, so not reducing parking, but thinking about more efficient ways of parking and, and really thinking about how to create an image, stronger image for, for the village center within this. What we're looking at, there's a yellow piece right there that is the Berlin train station or the site of the train station. And we are looking at a quarter-mile radius around that, which is about a five-minute walk. And this inner line is really the focus area. It's where most of the commercial and potential development sites are within that area of Kensington Village. So the question is, why would we do this here in Kensington Village? And there are a number of reasons to look at transit-oriented development within the village. It benefits the entire community by providing things that we've heard everyone wants. In a few public meetings, people talked about wanting to be able to better support the businesses in Kensington Village. They want more walkability. They would love more choices for restaurants, more retail, and more people feeling more active as a civic center. It can increase property values and tax revenue, engender civic pride, and can enhance the image for the town. And it creates a center that really matches the quality of your residential areas, and it also provides a civic core, a place to really think about traditions and engendering pride, and a place for empty nesters and millennials to call home right here in Berlin. And it also leverages train station improvements from Amtrak for Berlin's benefit. I'm just going to do a summary. We did some market condition report as part of this to understand how we're going to base this plan in reality.[1720.13] We're a firm that, I like to say we're planners that don't really like to plan because plans are usually these dusty volumes that sit on a shelf. And so we're really focused on how to implement and put all this work to good, efficient use. So what we found in the market conditions analysis, and this may not be a surprise for most of you, office market is pretty slow. There's limited demand for space here in Berlin. The growing sectors are healthcare, professional services, tend to be locating in other communities. The retail market for an analysis in about a two and a half mile radius, there is some potential for specialty food, clothing, restaurants and bars. Major retailers are unlikely here in the village. Small independent stores are more possible. And a higher concentration of housing can help give the kind of what we say rooftops to support those businesses. The residential market, there is a market gap to fill that could be filled here. Increasing the train service, retail and dining amenities and quality new units, really looking at market rate. Units where possible can attract young workers, new residents. And what we're seeing in all the places we work is empty nesters really want to stay close to home. They want more living choices. So we're looking at, thinking about how do towns get what they want? We've heard from everyone that in these meetings that they do want more people in the village. They want more choices for restaurants and stores, would like more housing. There are basically four ways. And the first one is really zoning for what you want. We've had about almost 100 years in this country of everyone zoning for what they don't want, but that doesn't give you what you want. It just keeps out what you don't want. And so really deciding on what you want, being very clear and proactive and being in control and zoning for it. More vitality, more activity and being in control of it. The second way is to really leverage public investments and create policies that really encourage private investment. And I want to just stress that public investments aren't always about money. They're about incentives. They're about providing information. There are other ways, marketing, doing programming within the village. It's not all about money, but it certainly can spur on private investment. The third way is really to create a compelling and coordinated image for the village center. What we see, this TOD plan sees the site of the historic train station as the civic heart of Kensington Village. We had a lot of people who were concerned about this station come to our last public meeting. And they really, I hope, understand that more people and development in Kensington Village that's appropriate to the scale and the historic nature can support adaptive reuse of historic structures and even a rebuilding of that train station in some guise. Because we do see that it can help reinforce the historic core, can put that building to economic reuse. And Amtrak has certainly supported that in other areas. And Mystic, they worked with Civic as volunteer group to get the cafe in the Mystic train station. So we see the possibility of rebuilding in some way with historic features in order to, to keep that sense about the history there and perhaps a signature restaurant there. The fourth way is to use activities and programming in the village in addition to bricks and mortar. So thinking about things that used to happen here, Yankee Peddler Days and such, and really activate. We had a focus group with the arts and culture people, people from the high school, teachers, artists, theater. And thinking about how they can jumpstart some of this, to get some activity and people here to help support business and get visibility for the village center. So those are the four tools we have in looking at this. I just want to talk through how TOD acts as a catalyst for all of this. It's really a puzzle piece and it all goes together one piece at a time. There's really no silver bullet for this. And it really does take a little bit of trust. We've heard from a lot of people, well, housing would be okay, but how do we know those other things are going to come? And I can say that it does. We've worked in a lot of places and all the pieces really need to be worked on all at once to make it happen. Food and retail, thinking about programming, thinking about high quality housing and connectivity, bike paths, connections to open space. So what can this look like in Kensington Village? I'm going to go through this very quickly. We're in the process of doing our concept diagrams. We see the core here. This is the train station, Berlin Steel. These are the Farmington Avenue sites that were earmarked for the police station. And then at the corner is going to be parking, Connecticut DOT. We looked at these sites as really the core. They're high visibility. They're right near the train station. They're ideal, thinking about development. And so we took them and we investigated three sites after talking with, with the town. Berlin Steel is kind of a long range. It's privately owned and I really do want to stress, this isn't about taking land. This isn't about buying this. This is privately owned, but we have talked with them and just said, we're going to lay out some concepts about a long range plan for what that might look like, even as they stay on the site. We looked at the Farmington Avenue parcels as a kind of critical catalyst piece. And then we looked at possibly doing another building on the depot crossing site to get some more, to more people there. And CIL has expressed an interest in possibly doing that. So the first one, we see these parcels as key at the police station. This is the existing plan that was on the table last summer with the boulevard coming from Farmington through into the train station. Police department on one side. It left a kind of development pad over here surrounded by parking and asphalt. We took a look at that and did a bit of an analysis and think, you know, it's a difficult thing when you have, the town owns this whole parcel to bisect it with 20% asphalt for roadway, really devalues what that site could be altogether. And leaves a piece over here that creates housing that doesn't really feel like it's anywhere. It's in the middle of asphalt and parking. And so thinking about, is there a better way to package this so that high quality housing, you really can think about the empty nesters, the millennials coming here? And so what we did was, we said, look, these parcels are town owned and site control really is everything. Places where we work, towns and cities would love to have site control, to have control over what happens. If the town did an RFP process, you'd have control over what that future was. Site cleanup is already underway. It's very high visibility. It's close to the train station. It supports development that's happening around it. And it's an ideal opportunity to set a tone and image for what you want the future of the village to be. So what we did, we said, what would happen if you moved the boulevard so that it doesn't bisect this anymore? And put it toward the right between 903 and 913. And it allows for future access into the train at the back of the site and into Berlin Steel in the future if the rail spur is ever deactivated. And it allows for housing with retail and public uses on the ground floor that really begin to create a sense of place. A green space here that's not taking away from any development, but is aggregating space that normally would just be all over the site. So that this would be an amenity for the whole town, because we think anything that happens here should be for the whole town. And allowing for those business uses, restaurant or whatever to be here on the green. So that's an opportunity. In the depot crossing scheme, we looked at adding another building. There's some wetlands back here. But beginning to then create a connection for potential trails and the idea is to connect all of these spaces together throughout the town. Because if you develop parcel by parcel, what you get are individual developments that don't add up into anything bigger. And what you really want to do is create a kind of bigger vision and destination for here. So it really creates an amenity for all the residents in the town. And the third piece is really long-term village, Berlin Steel, prime site adjacent to the train station, high visibility. And that site allows for the retention of some of the uses while other pieces would redevelop. And so the existing offices for Berlin Steel here, they're now using their shed for rental, for storage for Amtrak. Parts of this site could be developed, most likely for housing and allow an eventual connection along this rail spur into the site through the Farmington parcels and to possible dog park over here. So anyone who was here speaking about a dog park. But also the clay ponds that are here, really beginning to knit all of this together to tell a bigger story in the village. And this is just another scheme. If Berlin Steel eventually wanted to relocate into one of these buildings, this would be a prime site for a civic use, right near the train station to create a civic plaza there. Focus on the history of the train station. It could be, it could be the community rec building. It could be a YMCA. It could be a library. It could be something along those lines if you were shifting town uses from one site to another. But that could happen on this site as well and really kind of create an anchor there with the train station. And support retail on the lower level as well. So those are the three sites. They really are about connecting and offering amenities for the whole town in the way of more people and more services. We see paths that connect, the clay ponds and beyond to the Brickyard neighborhood and connecting through here to Farmington Avenue behind and then onward. This is the train station. So really trying to think of a bigger picture that's much more than the pieces. And so I just, I want to finish up because I know I'm probably out of time. That we really think that it's important to think about what the town wants and to zone for it as opposed to just thinking about what you don't want. So thinking about policy decisions that support your goals, zoning for it, trusting that housing and people will bring the other uses and the vitality that you want, and embracing change instead of fearing it. Kind of really saying, this is what we want and going forward allows you to really control it, which is the key to this. This public investment to encourage private investment is going to take all the tools available. It's about more than money. It's about prioritizing capacity. It's about saying government can't do it all, but there are other partners. Arts and culture, civic leaders, other uses, thinking about how to bring everyone in and giving them a piece about what this will be to make something happen. The success stories that we're a part of, it's always a big collaboration. I like to say planning is the allocation of scarce resources. And I'm thinking about how to creatively bring everyone to the table. And then thinking about a coordinated image, again, thinking about history, the values, using the train station to bring all that together and creative programming and events and what can happen here again. People seem interested in activating things like Yankee Peddler Days and other events that can happen here in the village center. So I'm just going to finish by saying some of the decisions and actions that would be necessary are decisions about the Farmington Avenue parcels. Will they be released for development? What will be in the RFP to make very clear criteria? Capital spending decisions and grants for what might need to happen. Development project investments and assistance, operational support for branding and event programming and maintenance, obviously of improvements down the line. I'm going to stop there. This is where we are in the project. We have about another month and a half. We're going to be kind of finishing up. We just had our second public meeting. And I guess our fourth focus group, and now we're looking at kind of finalizing recommendations.
For any of you in the audience, you know, recognize this is just, you know, we've hired Civic Moxie as a consultant. They're just kind of looking at our, this TOD zone around the new train lines that are coming to Berlin. And they're just going to, when they wrap it up, it'll just be advice they give us, things for more discussions with the community, with planning and zoning, with the council, with all the residents and, you know, as we move forward. I mean, I think everybody knows this TOD project is not going to be done in a, in a day, a year, probably not, it's not going to be done in 10 years. But, you know, we have to start figuring it out because we own some of that property. We may, you know, have things going on. Maybe some of the Berlin Steel property may become available in years to come. So it's a good starting place and a good way to give some thoughts to what we might do in that area as the trains start coming more frequently to Berlin. So we'll see when the study's wrapped up, we'll go through it again quickly. We'll see where we go from there as a community. Okay, so we moved that, so we'll just go continue on, so number four.
The next item on the agenda is the presentation of the audit results. Representatives from PKF O'Connor Davies, LLP, the town's auditors are here to present the information to the council.
Thanks.
Hello, I'm Kathy McNair. I'm an audit manager with PKF O'Connor Davies and I was in charge of your audit this year. If you want to pull out the book that we handed out earlier on appendix four is some financial highlights I'd like to go over. If we start off on the first page, we have the balance sheet of the governmental funds, which the two major funds are the general fund, which is where the majority of your expenditures are coming out of, and also your capital projects funds. From there, you can see as of June 30th, 2016, you have about 5 million in cash in, or sorry, 15 million. Don't want to give you a heart attack. 15 million in the general fund and about 16 million in capital projects. And 7.7 million investments in capital projects and that is the balance of your energy lease in the escrow account at June 30th. So in total, you have in the general fund, sorry, these numbers are a little small, 16 million in assets and 1.5 million in liabilities, leaving you with 13 million in fund balance in the general fund, 11 million of which is unassigned. If you turn to the next page, we have your general fund budget results. You budgeted to spend 79 million, you, or sorry, to receive 79 million. You received 80 million. So your 1.2 million, you received more than you budgeted. You budgeted to expend 81 million. You only spent 78.8 million. So overall, you did a lot better than you budgeted because you budgeted to use up 1.8 million of fund balance, but you actually gave back 1.6 million. And one of the main reasons for the revenues being higher than you planned was the 1 million bond premium from the $16 million general obligation bond. If you turn to the next page, you can see your unassigned fund balance over time. Between 2013 and 14, it dropped down to about 12 and a quarter percent. And it's been rising since then and it's about 13 and a quarter as of June 30th, which is right about where Moody's and the GFOI recommend. On the next page, you can see your unassigned fund balance by town. This is all the towns in the county minus Hartford because that skewed the graph a lot. As you can see there, your fund balance is right about in the middle towards the higher end. On the next page is the tax collection rates over time. You budgeted for 98.6% of the current year as a percent of the current year levy and you actually received 98.9%. So you're doing better than budget and you have for the last couple of years. Taxes receivable over time, they dropped a great deal from 2015 and that was part of our discussion with town management. We took a look through the delinquent taxes that were outstanding and a number of the properties were actually owned by the town. So we asked that those be removed off those tax rolls. You would approve that, they'd be suspended. So that's why there was such a big decrease in taxes receivable. The next graph shows the tax collections and receivables by town, by the county, taking out Hartford and New Britain because their taxes receivable are significantly higher than the rest of the towns. As you can see, the county average of taxes receivable is 2 and a half percent. The town's about 2 and a quarter percent. So below the county average, which is good now that the old taxes that really the properties belong to the town have been taken off of there. The next page shows your internal service funds, which is the general insurance and the medical and health insurance. Both of those decreased net position, but you still have a pretty strong net position with about 2 million in each fund. Taking a look at your long-term debt summary, this is an area where we've really talked a lot with the town. The increase in the general obligation bonds, the increase in your capital lease was due to the new energy lease, which I've actually seen a lot of towns putting those in place in the last couple of years. To take a further look at your bonded debt, on the next graph, it shows how much it's gone up over the last about six years. That long-term debt, which is just the bonds and leases as a percentage of your general fund revenues, has gone from about 40% up to a little over 100% since 2011. So comparing that to other towns in the county, the county average is about 57%. So you can see that it's quite a bit higher than county average, mostly due to the, the school bonds and everything. We also wanted to call attention to the pension liability. The total liability is $6 million, but the assets are only 360,000. So you've only funded about 6% of the liability, which is, was pretty low. I was comparing that to one of my other towns that's about a similar size and theirs is actually about 80% funded. So that's something to consider in the future. And then taking a look at the teachers' retirement, I also wanted to mention this because of the governor's new budget, which I know Kevin will be talking about. You could have to pay about 2.4 million for your portion of the teacher's liability. And it depends on if the governor changes the wording of the pension plan. If it becomes a cost sharing plan, then you might actually have to put some of this liability on your books, not just actually pay into it. So that's just something to consider. And also taking a look at OPEB, other post-employment benefits. This is like the health insurance that your teachers stay on once they retire. The only reason this liability is on here is because when your, the retirees get to stay on the plan, but they, they pay the full amount, but because they're on there, the school is paying more for the younger teachers. So it's showing a liability for that difference in price. And with some new accounting standards that are coming in down the line, it's... in price. And with some new accounting standards that are coming in down the line, it's, the liability is going to go up because with the last standard, it's been increasing over 30 years, and once the new standard comes in place, it's all going to end up on your books. So just, bear warning, the liability will get bigger, but it's not actually going to increase your costs at all. So just kind of wrapping it up, taking a look at the statement of net position. This is your long-term health. You have $205 million in assets, which includes your capital assets, which is the most major component of that. And then liabilities, you have $100 million in liabilities, leaving you with about $100 million in net position left over. So that shows your long-term health. Looking at the statement of activities, your long-term health went up $8.4 million. So that increased it from about $98 million to $106 million. And you can see from your net position over time that it's been increasing, especially over the last couple of years. So to just talk about our responsibility as auditors, we're responsible to perform the audit under generally accepted auditing standards to achieve reasonable, but not absolute assurance that the financials are free from material misstatement. We'd have to communicate in writing any deficiencies in internal control that we believe to be significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. We advise management on the appropriateness of their accounting policies and application, and communicate any fraud or illegal acts that we noted during the course of the audit, although our audit cannot be relied on to identify all such acts. And we did not find any fraud or illegal acts, or else, because that should not be a surprise.
We'll be having a different conversation.
Yes. So just other matters that they're in your packet in a little more detail. But we looked at internal accounting controls in the context of our audit. We think management's judgment and estimates appear appropriate. We didn't have any unresolved matters or disagreements with management. There weren't any significant changes to significant accounting policies. Our scope and timing was about as planned for the audit. If you want to look at any of the audit adjustments that were made or that were proposed but not made, you can take a look at Appendix Three. There weren't any consultations with other auditors, and we do not believe that our independence was impaired. Any questions?
Sure.
Just a quick question on the changes that may arise to the teachers' retirement and health
Yep.
concerns. I just want to clarify for the public about which of those we actually will be a real cost to us. So the OPEB piece, that is all kind of actuarial and figurative.
Yep.
There's no real payout for that because it's already being covered by the teachers paying into the system. But in terms of the retirement system, that $2 million you spoke of, that would have to be actually funded?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, just a comment on, there was some other auditing reviews that you did with respect to both our golf course and nurses and our IT and so forth, which we appreciate and has been made available to us. I don't know, I think Mr. Delaney has maybe forwarded that. If not, he needs to do that and make that available. That was the, and management had responses to those, and that was an additional value that was provided through your services this year, which we appreciate and brought in great value for us and for us to continue to take a look at some improvements. I know many of those are being acted on already. Some of them have to do with improvement in security within our IT environment, as well as just controls at different locations to ensure that we mitigate loss. So we definitely appreciate the efforts that went forth with that.
And those are all detailed in Appendix One if you want to look at them in more detail.
Yeah.
And management's response is in there as well.
Thank you.
All right. So mine and Marsha Marion, the partner who couldn't make it tonight, our contact information is on the front. So if you have any questions, just feel free to call or email us.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Okay.
Ready?
Yes.
Item number five. Kevin Delaney, the town finance director, is here to present an overview of the governor's proposed budget, upcoming budget for next two years.
Thanks. Hey, Kim.
Hey. I ended up with probably the least popular topic tonight. On February 8th, the governor presented his budget as he's required and as he does every year. We are now in the long session, so the legislature isn't scheduled to finish until June 7th. If history is any indication, that's about the day the budget will be done. So as we go through our upcoming budget process, we'll have to incorporate and consider some significant items that the governor brought forward on February 8th and how to incorporate those going forward. Couple key points, and hopefully everybody has the slide that I had provided. One of the main goals is the governor's focusing state education money, shifting it from suburban and rural communities to cities. And in doing so, that has an adverse consequence to communities like Berlin. He is changing the formula, proposing to change the formula that would determine ECS, and it is possible, unlike today, for a community to get no aid. Berlin isn't in that situation in the governor's proposal, but as we go forward, if the rules do change, that is certainly a possibility. We mentioned earlier, and I won't belabor the point, the teachers' retirement fund. It's a significant event. Up to this point, the teachers' retirement fund has been completely the responsibility of the state, and the governor is proposing that one-third of that responsibility would be shifted to municipalities. He is talking about looking at some different MBR and allowing, to the event that education cost-sharing grant is reduced, that it would reduce the MBR, which, as a reminder, is the minimum amount that we must budget for education. One thing that I think is really important to note is that the teachers' retirement contribution would not count towards the MBR. So it would be a responsibility of the community, but it would not be included in the education calculation under the governor's proposal. Something that has, to date, not affected Berlin, but depending on where we go with the budget, the motor vehicle tax cap is scheduled to go to 32 mils, and the governor and his proposal is proposing to keep that. What that could result in, and has in a small number of communities this year, but could next year or going forward, result in a split mill. In other words, a 32-mil motor vehicle tax and a higher tax for real estate and personal property. Essentially, it would be potentially shifting some of the tax burden. The governor also proposes to eliminate the 2.5% municipal spending cap. What that was put into place is, last year, a new revenue-sharing grant was provided to communities, and for Berlin, that benefited the town to $843,000. However, what comes with that is, in the first fiscal year, so FY 17, 18, if spending excluding certain items grows by more than 2.5%, the community would lose 50 cents for every dollar were over 2.5%. Now, the excluded items are significant, especially as we talked earlier about the debt position for the community. Debt payments are one of the exclusion items. Funding an underfunded pension liability is an exclusion, as is special education costs. So those are all items that could be excluded to come up with the cap, but I would remind you that that doesn't mean that they're no longer a responsibility of the community. So while we may be under the cap, they would still be responsibilities to be funded by the taxpayers. And finally, one piece for personal property, so for businesses, the governor has proposed eliminating, in instances where the total personal property of a business, so generally a very small business, is $10,000 or less, would eliminate that personal property tax. Once again, what that would ultimately do is spread that burden to the remaining taxpayers. On the second part of the slide I've given, the numbers from-
Can I ask a question before we move on to that? That last one you talked about, do we have any idea the impact that would be to Berlin dollar-wise, or?
Haven't looked at it.
We don't know yet. Okay.
I mean, ultimately, the impact overall would be zero, because what it would do is shift to the remaining taxpayers.
Just wondering how, what that shift actually is spread over.
Yeah. I was waiting a little longer to see if that really had traction or not, before digging through the details for those elements. When we look at the numbers, the amount of money that the town received from the general fund grants was $8.5 million for this fiscal year. There were a couple of other grants that were in the governor's budget. These are non-general fund. So Town Aid Road, these are used in the Public Works Group for smaller projects that happen throughout the year and do help with a number of areas. It might be something like tree trimming that was unexpected, or something smaller like that. And then LoSiP, which has been used to help with the number of different projects that are in there. But focusing on the general fund, the governor's proposal would take Berlin from $8.5 million to $5.7 million in the first year, and holding that for FY 19. So that's a, almost a $2.8 million drop in state aid. And then, in addition to that, as we mentioned earlier, the teachers' retirement fund would be a responsibility, and the town would have to pay to the state by December 31st of the fiscal year, this amount of money, which in 2007, or fiscal 18, would be $2.4 million, and it would be just over $2.5 million the next year. And it's scheduled to continue growing at that, you know, at that pace. So when you consider it all up, the governor's budget proposes to take almost $5 million of revenue, or I should say, $5 million between the revenue reduction and the increase for the teachers' retirement fund. So almost a $5 million hit unfavorable to Berlin, and slightly more than $5 million the next year. With all that good news-
Thank you very much. We're glad you're speaking tonight, yes.
Great. Mayor?
Yes.
You know, it's one of the things, I know you asked to have this, and this is just, having had some discussions in preparation for sharing the budget plans for the council, I just really wanted to get ahead of things so that you at least have a flavor where we're headed. This certainly can help each one of us maybe reach out to some of the folks that we know in the state, so that we can help them understand that the impact, huge impact it has on us for having not done anything significantly different. In fact, minding our books pretty well, and then now being saddled with significant reductions or significant changes. Hoping it's going to certainly change, but beyond hope, I think we need to certainly reach out and encourage some sanity with respect to going into this budget.
Yeah.
I will say too, you know, I think this is a similar process to what we do in town. So we'll hear our budget from Jack, you know, at some point, and we'll go back and take a look at it and make changes. I'm sure the legislature will do the same. So I think contacting and reaching out to our state representatives and senators is important. I would caution against hysteria at this point, because I think ultimately it's not going to be quite this bad. Not to say it's not going to be bad, but hopefully it won't be this bad.
I mean, that may be true, and I, we all hope that is the case. I just, the hard part too is going to be that we're not going to know probably till after our budget like we did last year, where they, you know, kind of slammed us after we approved everything. Yeah, so that's going to be very difficult. But just go forward with it. Nothing we can do about it now. Just go forward, do the best we can with it.
That's all we can do, is do the best we can with what we have, and be aware that there are known unknowns out there, and just, you know, try and do our best.
That's what we do. All right.
Kevin should stay there.
What's that?
Kevin should just stay there. Kevin's also here to present the review of the-
Thanks.
Legal fees.
Thanks, Kevin.
So he's here now to give you a summary of the legal fees.
Okay.
Well, this is actually good news.
Yeah.
Year over year, legal fees are coming in favorable. I tried to put together a quick little slide to give you a flavor for where we are fiscal year-to-date through February. So a good portion of the year, we're certainly well past the halfway point. The biggest driver of that is outside legal. The decision was made to move from someone who was essentially an employee to an outside firm. And, you know, to date, things have moved along pretty well. There hasn't been a significant amount of external activity which would have resulted in supplemental building. And the probate court fees, the supplies and operations of the probate court in New Britain that Berlin partners with have come in somewhat favorable as well. The good news with that against the budget is we're actually budgeting favorability year over year, so it's coming in even better, which is, which is a positive. I would expect that that would continue. And I guess I would just remind you that it was June of last year, so the last month of the fiscal year, when the switch actually happened. So we are currently about four months away from lapping that.
Can I ask a question about the shipment of Goodwin fees in terms of union contracts? And that is based, Jack, I guess, on actual, that's not kind of a year of monthly stipend or anything, it's based on actual contracts?
Yes.
So we should anticipate, what do we have coming up in the next year with them? One, one contract?
I think one more contract.
Just one more contract?
Yeah.
Okay, so it may not be quite as much as we're seeing this year because of, we had, what, two or three go at once?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had a couple of issues and probably more around the police department. There was an arbitration issue that we had to have counsel at. And then the contract has continued along, which has resulted in some more time. I think we're getting near the end. There's probably one or maybe two outstanding issues. I think once the police contract is resolved, we have white collar coming up next year, and then the following year will be a blue collar in nurses. But typically, historically, the police contract has been more of the time-consuming.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question. This goes back to the last topic. Jack, I think one of the local newspapers had one of the northern region, capital regional groups meet with their local legislators. Has anything been set up? At least they had that opportunity to go speak and give their frustrations.
We're requesting a meeting for the mayor, myself, and Kevin to meet with our representative for the speaker.
We have more than one state rep. Are we meeting with both of them, or?
At this point, I was, I was working on meeting with the speaker.
Okay.
Okay. And I, just as an aside, I have two friends from another part of the state. I've also met with them discussing, you know, in a broader perspective, but I have talked with them also about, you know, the governor's budget.
Mayor?
Great, yeah.
Just with respect to Corporation Council, and, you know, if we, if we look at it, it was, we budgeted for outside legal, it was $200,000. And we went from $50,000 to $200,000, and that was based on anticipation of these negotiations and other things that we would need for other outside legal. But as for Corporation Council specifically, the annual amount there is $114,000. Previously, it was $110,000 plus $41,000 in benefits. So we are definitely to the net positive in our cash flow going towards, going through this year and going forward. So if that's helpful to anyone.
It is. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks.
I'm sure we'll be seeing a lot more of you. Look forward to it, I think. Okay. Next, Pistol Creek.
Okay, the next one is a 8-24 referral for plans for improvements at Pistol Creek. Chris Edge is here to discuss the improvements and the grants that we've received.
Hi, Chris.
Good evening. Yes, we had received a grant to redo all of the cart paths, make one path handicapped accessible, which essentially means to make the grade even, as well as adding a couple handicap spots. And the plan in front of you shows essentially what's going to be done, and asking you to send it to Planning and Zoning for 824 approval.
Thanks.
One question.
Yes.
Chris, does this have any effect on the cross-country courses that the high school and the middle school run out there?
I am not sure to tell you the truth. We had not been in touch with them, but I definitely can reach out to them. I know we're still early enough in the process that we can modify this as needed.
Yeah, that might not be a bad idea.
Just the timing of it, yeah. I think that's a good idea.
Questions, if not?
Yeah, just one other question. Do we know what the amount of the grant, or the potential of the grant amount?
Yes, the grant was $125,000, and then I believe it was matched with $25,000 in open space monies from our own accounts.
And at this point, do we have any anticipated cost to this?
We are not. We, we actually are working on bid documents right now. And again, we're hoping the numbers would come in more favorable than that. We had used very conservative numbers with what we were looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. We have a motion on this?
Okay, move to refer the attached plans for improvements-
Okay, move to refer the attached plans for improvements at Pistol Creek to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a review pursuant to Section 824 of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, thank you.
The next item, by the way, on the agenda is the tax abatement proposal for Earl Wickland Inc. Earl Wickland has submitted his application for construction of two new office buildings totaling 9,000 square feet at 160 to 180 Webster Square. The project involves an estimated real property investment of $675,000 and expected to create five jobs and keep 20 jobs in Berlin. The abatement would be based on the increase in assessed value resulting from the real property improvements using the following schedule: 50% the first year, 40% in year two, 30% in year three, per the town's tax abatement policy. And the Economic Development Commission recommends the town council approve the application for Earl Wickland Inc., and Chris is here to discuss or answer any questions.
Yes. This had come before this body previously for buildings one and two. At this point, building three has been completed and leases have been signed for the entire building. Two of the tenants have not occupied yet. I believe two of them are from in-town, one is coming from out of town. It is, I believe, a statewide electrical contractors trade group that's going to be going into the middle of it, so bringing new jobs and investment. Building four, he's just put the foundation in and I believe at his pace, probably four to five months, that building will be complete.
Great. Those buildings look really nice, too.
Yep.
Doing a nice job on those buildings. That's great. See that empty lot finally filled up? Okay, make a motion on this?
Okay, I move to approve a tax abatement for Earl Wickland Inc. for the third and fourth buildings at 160, 180 Webster Square Road in Berlin, 50% in year one, 40% in year two, and 30% in year three for the town's tax abatement policy.
Second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Or none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, thank you.
Don't go anywhere.
And?
Item number nine on the agenda is an economic development report to the town council by Chris Edge.
Thank you, Jack. Yes, what I have before you, the first page lists just some activities in the last seven months from July 2016 to the end of January. In that timeframe, we had had eight businesses which either relocated to town or had started up in town. Some of them on the smaller side, let's see here, Simply Skin was one person, Up2PetSmart, as you know, the store there. Number of companies which, again, are making investments. And there were six companies in that time which were having expansions. Again, as we know, Accu of Berlin and then Forest Machine are both under construction at this point. So the good news is we're seeing activity, folks coming to town, we're seeing minimal businesses which are not doing well, which is good. Folks that are not doing well, we've been thankfully filling up storefronts, which has been nice. I just recently had an article in the Berlin Citizen, thank you very much, on the, we basically rediscovering Farmington Avenue. We have three new restaurants that have come in since last April. Himalaya Restaurant, India Nepali's Food, The Avenue Restaurant, which is kind of an Americana with an Italian twist, and then Ramen Y, which is soup and noodles. So the nice thing, too, we're getting the word out, we're seeing the businesses, and as best I'm able, let the people know, both in town and out of town, to, again, give the folks on Farmington Avenue a shot instead of going out to the turnpike.
Nice question.
Yes.
Question about, it's always going to be known as Mary's Pastry, I guess, but what is going on with that? Can we give us any update with that?
The owner of the property had completed the building. I have been in touch with them at this point. They have not found a tenant for it.
Can they take the fence down?
I-
Take the sign down? I mean, it just, it's, it looks, it's been a long time with that fence up.
I will reach back out to them. I know they, by history, don't use real estate agents, which in my mind makes it challenging because real estate agents often can bring things to the table. I will reach back out to them and see if we can get them to at least clean it up a little bit.
Thank you.
Yes.
Go ahead, Joe.
Is there any progress with, I believe it's called Depot Crossing? There was a lot of town money and state money spent to build that building and you're, I'm really thrilled there's so much action on Farmington Avenue. What's the problem there? Why can't we get something going over there?
The biggest impediment, I would say, at this point is the cost of finishing the inside. Essentially, at this side, at this point, heating, air conditioning, and plumbing needs to be brought up essentially into the building. The cost for a tenant going in is very expensive right now. We've met with them on a couple of things and numbers have just not worked out. I will continue to work with them. It's challenging. I believe they would like to lease the entire bottom floor, which I think in this marketplace right now, to lease an entire 1,000 square feet is not realistic. And really working with them to look at smaller chunks of the building, and that's more of a process. And I think probably needs to be another discussion, again, with leadership here in the town as well as their leadership to talk about their thoughts going forward, because I think it'd be good to align what we're looking to do with what they're looking to do. And that's a discussion that probably-
There were a lot of promises made to get the town to invest in it, and I'd like to see some payback on it.
Agreed. I absolutely would agree with you.
I agree too. Yeah.
Yes.
Any word from the developer of the lofts at Sherwood Falls about the townhouses they were supposed to put in?
Yes. They had, well, two things had come up. One, they did the Horse Nails Building Project in Hartford, Cape Well. That ended up being both financially and time-wise, a lot more intensive than they thought it was, so they ended up going to the back burner. We are hoping they will come back with a townhouse design. I know part of it was, when they initially came to us, and Director Riggins can, if I'm mistaken here, that when they came in initially, the design then to now is different. They're looking to make all of the units likely to have first-floor bedrooms, which on their initial design it did not have, but that is what the market is. We have not gotten a date on that, but talking to them now that they're finally beyond Cape Well, we're hoping we will see something soon. Thank you.
I have a question, are you good with that?
Yes.
Did we have a timeframe with them? I know it was based on capacity in the factory, making sure all those units were sold first, but did, was there, in the contract with them, was there any you have to start by? And I can't remember. I know they were here a little bit ago with the beautification thing, that I think we all agreed we didn't want to invest in, but I didn't know if they had to start building by a certain date or there was anything in that contract.
I just remember planning zoning, I think we kind of, the agreement sort of was they finish out the factory and then they would move to that. I mean, I know they finished with the factory, so hopefully, I don't think we had a timeline, right? Director Riggins, if I remember correctly, I don't think we had a, we didn't want time down to that, but, yeah.
I just want to say thank you for putting this on the item on the agenda and thank you, Chris, for being here. This is awesome. It's good to, you know, hear questions. I know everybody's got questions, so.
Yeah, it's great, Chris, thank you. And, you know, the other night at the business thing, I alluded to the fact that you were the Energizer Bunny, so we appreciate all your hard work because you never do stop. Literally, you don't stop going and the business owners of the town and the new businesses looking to come in and everyone in town has certainly noticed that and appreciate the time and effort you put in, so.
Thank you.
And it shows with our, you know, how things are going economic-wise, so we appreciate that.
Absolutely.
And that was a great article in the Citizen.
Thanks. Yes.
Yeah, I was just going to follow that up, Chris, because we all heard about this time last year from our residents about making this town perceived to be a different way. I mean, I think the economic development people here in town, whether it's on the commissioner yourself, went in a different direction. I mean, I think the list that's out there, new businesses, is actually bigger than this since last budget hearing, right? And I hope there's a plus on our side in the grand list that will help us this budget year. But I have a couple of questions about a couple of businesses because I did see invites to bid, because I'm in the construction industry, and both of them were for Arby's in Plainsville in Berlin. I was wondering where that, if you've heard anything on that, because I don't know if it stalled or...
At this point, I do not know. I know there was some architects that had come in, but where that stands at this point, I do not know at this point. I have not had conversations with them.
Okay.
But what you were saying, yes, since 20, early 2016, this is a list of folks that either came to or grew in town and my part-time economic development associate, Nicole Pack, who's been on for exactly a week, put this on, put this together, and it really shows well, the companies, folks that are here, and even our largest taxpayer ever sourced, when they sold the property in Newington across the street, I think it was 3333, brought about 25 employees to Berlin.
Excellent.
So that in itself is good news for our community. Couple of things on the second page I'll go through quickly. Working very hard right now with the technical ed and consumer education departments at Berlin High School to connect them with our businesses. We did a gathering on Friday, again, the goal, job shadowing, internships, visits, and we're hoping either later this spring or in the fall, we will have a bus that will go out to businesses and literally see what's happening, particularly non-traditional.
If you have not done so, I would strongly suggest reaching out to Toms because they were so interested and really wanted to bring kids into that manufacturing. So if you haven't already, please reach out to them about that. I think they would be absolutely thrilled with that.
I was there last Thursday. It is amazing and yes, they would be first in line.
Awesome.
So right now, exploring a way to potentially create an industrial subdivision in town. We have a couple of different large parcels of land and I really would like to find a way for us to get some small sites. There are companies that are around, both in-town and out-of-town, that don't have a place to grow. Right now, two of our industrial buildings, call them complexes, are now completely full. Precious Properties on Christian Lane and then where Nedu is on Demming Road. In my mind, it's good news. Things are starting to lease up, but that means it's time to start building new, so I'm going to be working hard to try to make that happen.
Awesome.
Again, working to market Berlin to retail and restaurant sectors. We're going to be having a table at the, get it right, International Council for Shopping Centers event in Hartford on March 8th. Essentially, that's a combination of real estate, developers, companies, and musical professionals to get together, talk to each other, and talk about opportunities in town. Working, have worked very closely with the staff of Development Services. It actually has been an absolute wonderful marriage with them. Any need, we've had anything that's come up, whether it's questions as well as guiding firms through Planning and Zoning, Zoning Board of Appeals, it's actually been quite wonderful that we've been able to work in coordination and bring many things, including the next couple of months, potentially two more folks looking to build new buildings. So it's really worked well. It says a lot about how nicely we've chatted together. One of the things that have recently happened is firms are coming in front of the Economic Development Commission for recommendations, previously going to the Planning and Zoning and Zoning Board of Appeals. The nice thing, too, is we get a chance to say, we like it, we don't like it, what do you think about this? It really helps to give them a confidence that we're all in this together to help their businesses to grow. And last thing, continue to celebrate firms who grow in town, relocate here, or start up in Berlin. If you were not connected with me on LinkedIn, if you have LinkedIn, please do. I have just put up my 50th post on companies growing, and I'm excited about that. That's my main avenue and working as hard as I can to raise the red Berlin flag whenever I can.
Appreciate it. Again, thank you to yourself, to EDC, Planning and Zoning, and Zoning Board of Appeals. You're right, they all need to work together and they do seem to be working very well together, which is great to hear and to see. Yes.
I am just absolutely thrilled about that manufacturing-school connection that you're having there with our students. I think that's absolutely wonderful and that's one of the things that I heard in 2015 when we were all running for the seats that we occupy now, is I heard a lot of people in the manufacturing sector saying how they can't get folks for those jobs. So connecting people to these good-paying jobs is essential and I think that that's awesome. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
And I think it's eye-opening. When I went towards some of those, I think when we all think about manufacturing, you think about kind of those old factories, dirty, greasy, and it's the exact opposite. It's high-tech, it's clean, it's tech, it's amazing. So seeing, having kids actually be able to see that and understand what it entails, I think, gives them another opportunity if they're not on the college path.
Well, there's at least three companies I know of that Berlin is one of, a number of locations they have, and they literally said Berlin is our technology center.
Awesome.
And I think that's both the people, the knowledge, and the location. It says a lot about us and the people that live here and around our community.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, we just have some amazing companies that you don't even realize what they make. I was surprised, like, earlier this year or last year, I think the, what's the name of the company that makes the washing machines?
For the ships.
For the submarines?
Edrover.
For the aircraft carriers?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's cool. I didn't know that. I mean, that's amazing to have that right here in Berlin and they're actually groundbreaking with the washing machines on a submarine. I don't know what they did before, but maybe a washboard, a rag?
You don't want to know.
No, probably don't want to know, but-
I'll give you a funny insight into that.
Do you know what they do before?
That's right, Dan, you should know, you're out there, so.
They worked well, enough, is all I can say.
If we do do a bus tour, I will happily invite the members of this council to join us.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
That's great. Alright, thanks a lot.
Mayor, just a quick question for Mr. Edge.
Yeah.
The numbers there on, it looked like employees, would that be just the number of jobs added or affected? Was that a net increase or was that a, I didn't have a label for the column, so I-
Oh, I apologize. That is new jobs to Berlin.
Okay, that's excellent. And then I had one other suggestion on bringing the interest in firms in coming in front of the economic development. I'd recommend that you hear their plans first and then give some recommendations so that they're not, we look at their ingenuity and their plans so that we don't crush their spirits.
Well, no, normally what we do is they will present as part of, much like this evening, public comments. They can present what they're looking to do, we can then ask questions, and no, yes, no, we-
Yeah, it was just written a little differently, so I want to just encourage-
No, no, absolutely.
The entrepreneur is coming in. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Right. Item number 10 is the set the compensation for temporary town manager services.
I don't know about that, Jack. Alright, so we have a, we had, the council had a discussion at our last meeting, so want to make a motion?
Move to increase the compensation of Jack Healy, temporary town manager, by $3,000 per month beginning February 1st, 2017 to April 30th, 2017.
Second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Okay, appointments. We have a couple names. I apologize, I didn't get a chance. I know Kate, you told me, the one gentleman, I wanted to speak to him, I didn't get a chance to, but I will by their next meeting, that was interested in a couple of different commissions. He seems very qualified for both. I want to just call him and see, he can't do both if he gets, if he does the Board of Ethics, as we all probably know, so I just want to see which one he might be more interested in and explain that to him, so I will give him a call before our next meeting and we can nominate him. Appreciate his interest and we will not forget that one. And then we have just one for the historic district, and that's good to fill another spot on that, as always. I know Dave Evans will be very happy with that. So we have a nomination for the-
We have a spot in the Historic District Commission, full vacancy. Would like to nominate Andra Millard.
Okay, thank you. Any other nominations? Okay, thank you. Any other nominations? Here, hearing none, we'll go ahead. And that, that would be, I guess, Kate, for number-
Seven, right?
Seven, right? I guess that vacancy there.
Sure.
Yeah. All right, so, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, congratulations to Andra. Okay, and any other nominations? We'll look to fill some more, and we're down to the town managers' report.
Town manager's report, um, this week, we've, we've had several meeting, meetings, um, going over the budget primarily. Um, uh, and we, we've also met with planning and zoning, uh, regarding the development on, um, 57 Southington Road. Um, and they've, they've progressed where that, um, we have issued, per, they are in the process of issuing building permits for one site. That was a site that the house is already on, but they're continuing. They've rescinded the, uh, the stop work, and that they're back to going to reissue, uh, building permits for that. Uh, we also met about the, uh, the housing authorities, prop, uh, looking at the property on Percival Avenue, um, and, and we've got to the point, we, we had a discussion about that, and one of the things that came up was potentially leasing the property to them for a dollar, and, and seeing if we can work out an arrangement so that DEP can, can fit that into their, into their agreement schedule. Right now, the, the way it's set up, they, they, they are still hard and fast. They couldn't make that trans- transformation, but with the, they're going back, um, to see whether or not they could fit that into their, into their, um, their schedule. So, I think we've made progress on that, so.
That's great to hear. Uh, we've all worked very hard on this, the council and everyone else, so hopefully we can make that progress and come to a conclusion for the project.
That's great.
That's good news. Um, what else, anything else?
That's, that's pretty much it.
That's it? Okay, uh, special committee?
Can I ask the town manager something, um, in terms of, and I don't know if you've talked to Denise Parsons, um, about the, I think the posting went out for town manager?
Yes, it did.
I think that's there, and, and if we've had any responses at all yet, I don't know.
I have not heard of any responses at all.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's also gone out on the, uh, the T2 website, Transportation Technology of Yukon. Uh, that's, that's a site that many, uh, public officials look at, so it's gone out on there. We're also looking at the APWA to see whether or not we can put it out on there for no fee, 'cause the town is a member of APWA.
Okay, all right. And, and, um, do you know if Denise has, um, or Adam, um, had sent out the RFP for the consultant?
I believe they're wor- the work on the wording, I am not sure that they sent it out or not, yet.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Uh, special committee reports, what do we have? Do we have anything, uh...
Just a reminder, clear your schedule for March, right, we got the budget hearings? Budget meetings?
Yes.
Can I go back to the town manager?
Sure.
Sorry. Um, I don't know if we ever got an update from, um, Dave on tax collection for January, with it being, for the first time, kind of really that split, that first January tax collection, how that went, um, and if there was any problems with it, if it was smooth, and, you know, what's going on with his position? Has that been posted?
The job has been posted.
Okay.
As far as how that went, I'm not, I haven't heard anything negative.
So, we're assuming it went okay? If you can ask him for the next meeting, I'd just be interested knowing that this was kind of the first, was it the first time? I think it was the first January payment due, so just making sure there was no concerns from the public or any issues that they may have had. Okay. Okay, I swear I'm done. No more questions.
Okay, I don't think there's any special committee reports, right? I think we already took care of them last time, obviously, since the last one. Uh, council communications?
Yes, sir.
I had a couple of questions. One was whether it happened to our ethics policy that we asked the town manager to send out quite a while ago, and employees were gonna sign it, and did any of them ever come back? What's going on with that?
Good question. Yeah, I don't know, I mean, but-
So Denise Parsons may have got it.
I signed mine.
Yeah.
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 We did get a lot of them back, but there was also some, um, I was the, the holder of them, so they were submitted to me. Um, we do have a lot, but there was some, um, pushback with the unions.
How do we resolve?
And I don't think that that's been resolved yet. There was some discussion that, uh, to have the board of ethics look at it again. There's no meat to it, like, there's nothing that says in the policy that if you don't submit it, you know, I can slap your hand. You know, there, there's nothing to, like, go after it again.
Was it actually presented in hard copy to be signed?
Yes.
It was, to each employee?
Yes, it was. And going forward with any new employees, they're given it. All right, so, most of them will sign, um, and it depends upon the level of the, the job, so, if I remember everything correctly. So, like, for, um, the elected officials and for top management, we had to fi- we had to also put a financial statement together, and most of those have been done. For people who are in other, um, unions, most of them only have to just sign saying that they received the policy. So, s- some have done it, some kind of gave a pushback on it. It's something that we do need to look at again. Charlie, I'm kinda happy that you brought that up.
I heard a lot about it, and then it kinda fizzled. Uh, maybe our personnel director could look at that. I know the budget consuming everybody, but maybe a month-
She has presented it to any new employees, and they have at least signed saying that they received the policy.
It'd be easier to-
Yep.
-insist on a new hire.
Yep. I'm sorry.
I was just gonna ask you, maybe if we can just get a percentage compliance at this point?
I'm happy to, um, put something together for you. I did give you some information, I think, uh, quite a while ago, on the managers, but, um, I haven't looked at it again, to be honest with you.
Did all the managers sign it, do we know?
It was supposed to be, like, everybody, so, um-
Do we, but, so we have, like, a signed document from all the managers?
For the most part. You know, I don't know who hasn't. I'll have to look at it again. It has been moved kind of to the back burner, but I'm happy to do that.
Okay, and just, I don't know, if you have any, like, what, if, let's say some town employees say, well, I don't, I don't want to sign it, I don't want to acknowledge that I, there was a policy. I mean, that's all we're really asking for, that they know that what our ethics policy is, right?
Yeah, I mean, if, if it's, if it's different between union and non-union-
Sure.
If it's a condition of employment for a union employee, it really ought to be a subject of collective bargaining.
Okay, yeah.
You can't put a relevant contract that posts-
Right.
-new requirements. For non-union employees, I mean, all you're doing is asking for an acknowledgement that they've read it.
Right.
So, it's not like a non-compete or some other-
Yeah, right.
-restrictive covenant that would require consideration.
Right, it's just a, yeah, just, just that they received it.
Yeah, that's pretty ridiculous.
Yeah, right. All right, so, so with the union people, though, what do we do with that? We just can't, so you can't?
Well, I mean, I haven't seen the collective bargaining agreement, so I don't know what language you have already with regard to-
Okay.
Mid-contract imposition of ethical requirements, or whether they're subject to something already. I don't know.
Right.
But if they're not, then it should be something that's dealt with the collective bargaining, as each of the contracts come up three to open.
Okay. All right, maybe so going forward, we can, uh, remember to do that, or, I don't know, if you'd be willing to look at some of the ones we've just done and see what, what, if there's any issues with them acknowledging it.
Would it, would it make sense to have Kevin Roy look at it too, since he's our labor attorney?
Well, before we go too crazy here, I'm happy to, I'm happy to send-
It just seems since he's the labor guy, it makes sense-
Yeah, I'm happy to send everything to attorney Denofio, but can I sit down with Jack and kinda go through everything, and then kinda revisit it and come up to speed? I didn't get you, everybody, a list of who has, and then, um, and who we maybe just forgot to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, we don't even, I just, the percentage, if there's people, you can recirculate it. I mean, you know, you can take care of that, that's fine. I mean, the, I understand the union thing could be an issue, I certainly understand that, but-
And we can definitely get Kevin involved in it, of course, also, yeah.
It just seems to be his competition.
So, let's wait and see. Let you guys, again, I know it sort of fell off the shelf.
Get some numbers on it, percentage compliance, and that's the kind of key. How big of a problem is it, or isn't it? That's, that's what we need to understand.
Yeah, I don't know if we really even know that, yeah.
Can I ask a question for Kate, since you're here? This was, you know, we hit, we just nominated people for commissions, and we have a couple people on a commission that would like to meet but can't, on the cemetery commission, 'cause the chairman doesn't want to schedule meetings, so I'm wondering, maybe you don't have to do it today, give us an idea of how we can take care of that. Um, can we combine commissions? I, I, you know, you've got people that want to be, be there and do something and can't.
Okay, um, yes, again, if I could talk to Jack first, and then I'm happy to-
I think we can kick people off committees, we've done that.
Well, we have done that, yeah, and, let me just, yeah.
I want to do the right thing, so.
Nope. I agree a hundred percent. I think it's a, and the people who do want to meet, they really want to meet, so I understand that. They need a new chairperson, probably, for when that starts.
Okay.
You had another question, huh?
Yeah, one more.
You can't let us talk, Charlie, you should know better than that.
During the, uh, the high school ceremony, an incident happened at the trailer park, and it required the town manager to, to deal with it. You happened to mention there was a leak in the roof or something, and it brought to mind, I think we all talked about trying to get the housing authority to take this over. How do we move forward with that? They're much better at being landlords.
And they want it, I think.
Do that.
I think I think he'd be willing to take it, absolutely.
So, how do we move that forward, is my question?
If you want, if there's something that you're interested, I think, he just tends to call him.
There's-
This was the private.
Well, that was a private, but I think, but, but I think the other conversation is, is the one the town owns.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, I think there is a concern with that. We just want to make sure that someone doesn't come, we didn't want someone to come in privately and jack the, the rent up so high that people would say that, but I think the housing authority-
Housing authority would be a good choice.
Yeah, and, and I think Joe's willing to, to do that and look into it, so.
They're geared to be landlords, working on the town, really isn't.
I agree completely, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this particular incident was at the other trailer park, and it was handled, handled by the fire department, and it was handled, and so the person there remained safe, and we, we, we checked on them during the storms and made sure that they were okay.
Oh, yeah, this one, okay, okay. Um, okay, well, maybe, so we'll, uh, make a phone call to Joe. Call Joe.
That's on your list.
Yeah, girl, thank you very much. I've had a lot of phone calls with Joe in the